Okay, seeing that it's 6:30, I'd like to call the meeting to order. So... Can't hear you. Okay, if we can call the meeting to order, please, at 6:30. Welcome to the April 25th meeting of the All Intangee School Board of Education, regular meeting and business session. Couple logistical items tonight. We have kind of a unique setup where we're going to open the meeting in this room. We're going to go down the hall to the Shanahan Team Room where there is a choir, the Indian Springs 4th Grade Chorus is going to do a little presentation for us. When they're done, we'll come right back here, re-convene the meeting, and then get on with the business agenda. So you're welcome to join us on that trip down to the Team Room. If you don't want to, that's fine, but that's what the board will be doing. That will probably take 20 minutes?
They have three songs.
Three songs?
And they're 4th grades.
Yes. At the max, 20.
Okay.
Hopefully 10.
So that's logistically a little different than what we're used to doing. So with that, I guess we'll call the order. Mr. Johnson, please call the roll.
Ms. Dunbar, Ms. Feasel.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, here. Do a pledge of allegiance, please.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic from which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. I'd like to approve the agenda. We have an addendum to the agenda, so...
Yes. I just wanted to mention the addendum. It's Certified Classified Staff. Obviously, this is the April meeting. Usually, April, May is when we're acting, not only on resignations, but also new hires. So we do have an addendum. I believe we provided that to you today, correct? So as listed, we have added items in Certified Staff, A3, 6, 10, 14, 17, 18, as listed in Certified Item B2, as listed.
Excellent, thank you. Any questions or any additions to the...
Yes. I have something to present to the treasurer of the docket. I filed a lawsuit today against my fellow board members.
Okay, this is on...Adam, this is on the agenda?
I know. I want the docket recorded in the minutes for this meeting from the lawsuit that I filed today against my fellow board members for violating the Ohio Open Meeting Law.
Adam, if this isn't relative to the agenda and you're adding an agenda item...
I move, I move no public monies shall be spent defending the four board members for their individual violations of state law. Or, in the alternative, if any public monies were spent defending the four board members, those members agree to reimburse the district if found to have violated the open meetings law.
Do I have a second? None? Okay, motion dismissed. Okay, I'll accept a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
As amended?
Second.
Okay, color roll.
Ms. Feasel?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes. Okay, we'll now adjourn to the Team Room. Be back in about 20 minutes.
Hi, I'm Renee Garcia, and I am so proud to represent the 4th Grade students from Indian Springs. And we just want to say thank you so much for inviting us here to the board and Dr. Lucas. And I want to really thank the parents also. You can tell by our attendance tonight that our parents really support the arts at Indian Springs. So thank you for coming. I just want to give you a little background about our musical tonight. We decided to try something new this year. We put our Broadway review together on our own, so we wrote an original script and compilated some of our most favorite music from different Broadway shows. And also, this is the first for us to write our own script, also the first for us to have an all-boys song and an all-girls song. So that's something that we take pride in. And so I just want to introduce the 4th graders from Indian Springs. And Racy, who's our director, she's going to guide us along. We're just going to hear a little bit of the songs today, not the whole show, so this is a little snippet of the whole thing.
Welcome to our 4th grade show of Broadway Review. Places, people, places! This is from Head Musical Hairspray. You can't stop the beat! Hit it!
You can't stop an avalanche as it races down the hill. You can try to stop the season's curl, but you know you never will. And you can try to stop my dancing feet, but I just cannot stand still. The world keeps spinning round and round, and my heart's keeping round to the speed of sound. I was lost till I heard the drums, and I found my way. You can't stop the beat, every city bursts all the light. You know and know that we can shake it on a Saturday night. So I'm gonna shake and shimmy with all my might today. You can't stop the motion of the ocean, 'cause the sun is out. You can wander if you want to, but I'll never ask why. And if you try to hold me down, I'm gonna spit in your eye and say, "You can't stop the beat!" Yeah!
This is from Peter Pan, "I Won't Grow Up." And action!
I won't grow up, I won't grow up. I don't want to go to school, I don't want to go to school. Just to learn to be a parent, just to learn to be a parent. Every side is silly rule, every side is silly rule. If growing up means it would be to leave my dignity on the street, I'll never grow up, never grow up, never grow up. Not me, nor four, not me! So there! I won't grow up, I won't grow up. I don't want to wear a tie, I don't want to wear a tie. Or a serious expression, or a serious expression. In the middle of July, in the middle of July, when growing up means I'll learn, now I'm believing in her word. I'll never grow up, never grow up, never grow up. Not me! I won't grow up, I won't grow up. I'll never grow a day, I'll never grow a day. And if someone tries to make me, and if someone tries to make me, I'll simply run away, I'll simply run away. I won't grow up, I won't grow up. I will never even try, I will never even try. I will do what Peter tells me, I will do what Peter tells me. And I'll never ask him why, and I'll never ask him why. I won't grow up, I won't grow up. No, I promise that I won't, no, I promise that I won't. I'll stay here forever, I'll stay here forever. And if it ends, I will go, and if it ends, I will go. And never land where I always be. So all of youth and joy and liberty. I'll never grow up, never grow up, never grow up. Not me, not me, not me, not me! Not me!
There is a castle on a cloud. I like to go there in my sleep. Aren't any floors for me to sleep, not in my castle on a cloud. There is a room that's full of toys. There are over hundreds of boys and girls. Nobody shouts or talks too loud, not in my castle on a cloud.
Good evening, dear Inspector Lully, my dear. I know this man, my friend's name is Inspector Joubert. So don't believe a word he says, 'cause none of it's true. This only goes to show what little people can do. And little people know what little people fight. Make like easy pickings, but we got some fight. So never kick a dog, because it's just a pup. We'll fight like 20 armies, and we won't give up. So you better run for cover when the pup grows up.
Our girls will now perform the spectacular Do Re Mi from the Sounds Music.
Do, a dear, a female dear. Re, a drop of golden sun. Me, a name I call myself. Far along the way to run. So, a beautiful thread. Love, a love to follow soul. Tea, a drink with jam and prayer that will bring us back to do. Do, re, mi, fa, so, fa, ti. Do, do. Ti, fa, so, fa, mi. Re, do, mi, mi. Mi, so, so. Re, fa, fa, la, ti, ti. Do, mi, mi, so, so. Re, fa, fa, la, ti, ti. When you love the notes, you sing. You can sing most anything. Do, a dear, a female dear. Re, a drop of golden sun. Me, a name I call myself. Far along the way to run. So, a beautiful thread. Love, a love to follow soul. Tea, a drink with jam and prayer that will bring us back to. So, do, la, fa, mi, do, re. So, do, la, fa, ti, my soul. So, fa, ti, da. So, do!
Our boys will now do the King of New York from Newsies. Let's see if they can top girls. I doubt it, though.
A pair of new shoes with matching laces. A furman named Buck said the horses racing. A brand-new tub with boiling water. A chance you see the mayor stutter. Look at me, I'm the king of New York. Suddenly, I'm respectful, staring right at the loud newsstand. Ain't it all the wonder you must start blowing my dough and gold? Do, do, dare I be? Ain't I pretty? It's my city. I'm the king of New York.
A corduroy shoe with many nicker. Makes me seem to see the flanker.
A high shoe shined across the corridor. Nellie, Nellie, Stan's brother started a party.
Look at me, I'm the king of New York. Suddenly, I'm respectful, staring right at the loud newsstand. Begin to headline out a hunch, protected, but we can pay for it. When I'm at that strong and crumble crowd, yet humble, I'm the king of New York.
Neither dead or dreaming, look at that tape with my face eaten. Far they may rub fishes in it, but I was a self-worshiped woman famous.
Look at me, I'm the king of New York. Suddenly, I'm respectful, staring right at the loud newsstand. Begin to headline out a hunch, protected, but we can pay for it. When I'm at that strong and crumble crowd, yet humble, I'm the king of New York. Victory, wrong, gay story, God save the Lord. I'm the king of victory, wrong, gay story, God save the Lord. I'm the king of New York!
Here's a touching song from the musical, from musical Wicked, For Good. Here you go.
I've heard it said that people come into our lives for a reason. Bringing something we must learn, and we are led to those who help us most grow if we let them, and we help them in return. Well, I don't know if I believe that's true, but I know I'm who I am today because I knew you. Like a comet pulled from orbit as it passes the sun. Like a stream that meets a boulder halfway through the wood. Who can say if I've been changed for the better? But because I knew you, I have been changed.
Every musical needs a grand finale. Now let's make it your best, and go!
Give my regards to Broadway. Remember it's a herald square. Tell all the gang at 40 seconds that I will soon be there. Whisker, now I'm yearning. Dingle, if the old times wrong. Give my regards to all Broadway, say that I'll keep their hair long.
Come on along and listen to the lullaby of Broadway. The pray and belly-hoo, the lullaby of Broadway.
They say that I won't last too long on Broadway, on Broadway. I'll catch a grayhound bus for home, they say.
They're wrong, I know they are, 'cause I can play this year guitar.
And I won't quit till I'm a star on Broadway, on Broadway. They say that I won't last too long on Broadway, on Broadway. I'll catch a grayhound bus for home, they say.
They're wrong, I know they are, 'cause I can play this year guitar. I won't quit till I'm a star, I won't quit till I'm a star, on Broadway!
Okay, I just have a question for you guys, if you don't mind. My name's Stacy.
Hi, Stacy.
How many of you are really in 4th grade?
Are you sure? She didn't bring some ringers in here?
I'm not sure.
Because, do you know that the high school choir sang For Good at graduation at Liberty the other year? And I can tell you, you guys were just as good and brought me to the same tears that they brought me. So how many of you want to keep doing this in middle school? How about high school? All right, show choir, up here. Show choir needs all of you, especially the boys, because usually they start to fade away. So stick with it, keep going, all right? Thank you so much. This is what we do this for, and I'm so pleased with the parents being here and supporting it. You have some talented children, and this is what makes it all worthwhile. So thank you for letting them, sharing them with us tonight.
Thank you, guys, all for coming. We're just going to sit for a moment, let the traffic go. Thank you, guys, all for coming. Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[1393.12] to look at our governance structure and think about, should we be having dialogue about how that needs to evolve as the district evolves?
I have a question on that.
Yes.
You said we'll have a strategic planning meeting, is that?
July agenda will be?
Will be strategic planning?
Yeah, like we did last year.
I know at the Career Center, we actually do a separate meeting, like every other year, just for strategic planning, because it allows us to really get in, to really do some good work.
Yep.
And this is just a suggestion, and the board access the strategic planning committee with input from administrators and outside people who have the expertise.
So is it like a Saturday?
We did it during the-
Four hour kind of thing?
Yeah, we did it during the week, actually. Took a day vacation, and we did it at the Boy Scout camp. Had it there. They have a meeting room that we had it in.
A retreat format.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I know, I think Big Walnut also does that, and Buckeye Valley.
Okay.
It should be a single agenda.
Right.
Right, one agenda item, strategic planning. So, we should take a look at that as we think about those meetings in June, July, April of July?
Right.
So that's good feedback.
Yep.
Second item is the treasurer's search. So we'll be spending some time, executive session tonight, to update the board, a little preview of what we're going into tonight. So the application process, or the application window, has been closed. We have 11 candidates that applied for the position. Eight are sitting treasurers. One is an assistant treasurer. One is a senior analyst, an education-focused entity. One is a retired treasurer, so sitting. So I think we've got a good deep pool from which we can have some dialogue about later tonight. But process-wise, I'd also ask you to look at your calendars in May, because tonight's executive session, we'll talk through the candidates that we have, and then how we might want to set up some interviews and meetings in May. And I would suggest thinking about two separate dates in May, to do two separate sets of interviews, okay? We'll talk more about that later. And finally, my last item is relative to the litigation that Mr. White referred to earlier. Our understanding that there was a suit filed earlier today regarding Sunshine Law. I've not been privy to the complaint. I did see the press release, but I haven't been privy to the complaint. And we're conferring with council. But with that said, I do move that the board adopt the following motion. And that motion reads, "The Olentangie Local School District Board of Education ratifies a letter to the editor that four board members submitted to the Columbus Dispatch in response to an October 11, 2012 editorial. The board denies that it violated the Sunshine Law, and it will not comment further on a lawsuit that reportedly was filed less than six hours ago." So with that, do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? Okay, call the vote.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Ms. Fiesel?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. White?
I'm staying.
That concludes the president's report. Oh, sorry, one last item. Some key dates to keep in mind. Oh, and I did jump again. We did board committee updates. So we do key dates, we'll do board committee updates, my apologies. May 14, 15, and 16 are the senior nights. I would recommend, to the extent you can, to be in attendance. It's a great opportunity to see the quality of the end product, so to speak. When you get to hear the awards, the scholarships, the destination colleges, it's an impressive, impressive evening when you get to go frank the all three of them. And our next meeting is May 7th, so that's pretty important as well. So with that, let's do board committee updates, if we can. Fairly quickly, I'll save you the last, Julie, because you probably have the most. So Dave, you want to quickly cover audit and finance committee?
Finance and audit met the other evening, and Kevin was there in attendance along with me. A great turnout.
Yeah.
I think everybody on the committee was there. Todd presented first draft and five-year forecast for the committee's review. Excellent dialogue. Gosh, it's probably a couple of hour meeting, as I recall.
It was.
And with some comments, Kevin, I mean, I'm sorry, Todd has updated some information he provided, so we'll look forward to that presentation.
Yeah, we'll have the first reading of the five-year forecast at the May 7th board meeting. So a lot of good work done on that committee and the treasurer's office, or the interim treasurer's office. Thank you.
Isn't the 7th a Tuesday, though? I thought the 9th was a Thursday.
No. I had the memo from Terry saying it was the 7th.
While you're checking that, I'll just mention too, that Julie and I, unless you were going to speak to this, Julie.
It's the 9th.
It's the 9th? Okay, my apologies. May 9th. You can come on the 7th, we won't be here. We'll be here on the 9th.
I'll mention too, you know it's not a board committee, but unless you want to speak to it, Julie.
Go ahead.
Julie and I both attended the League of Women Voters Session last week, where there was a dialogue about school financing, and it was, it was pretty well-attended.
Very.
Some excellent questions, and I thought it was a really good meeting.
Development committee?
Development committee, we've actually met twice this month, because we're starting to do those tours. But in the, in the May meeting, update on 2020 and their report to the board, reviewed the turf standards that the district's been working on to make sure any proposals that come before are up to the standards we need from a safety. So that was a great update. And then went through the capital improvement planning software that they're using, and what the plans are around that, and looking for an intern to help get some of that, you know, stuff into the system. And then, the more fun one, no offense to the first one, was the building tour of Olentangie High School. We're every month touring a different building to look from a facilities update perspective. We've got some buildings that are getting older and what they need, and actually ended up on the roof of Olentangie High School. And so, looking at the roof and getting a real chance to get in there and really see the facilities. And I really appreciate the committee taking that, that second evening to take walkthroughs. And so now we've been through Shanahan and Olentangie, and have another one scheduled for next month, and where we are next month, actually. If Jeff's here, he can tell me. But really getting an opportunity to get in there and see the classrooms, and see the, how they're holding up. And at Olentangie, I just, I just have to give a shout out to the people cleaning and maintaining that building. It's a, it's a nice-looking building, and they, I mean, we were seeing things and actually doing little white glove tests on things, and fairly impressive with what that staff has managed to do to keep that building in great shape. So, committee's doing some really, some good work.
Yeah, a quick one?
The saving, I know you want to say Julie for last, so I, I'm sorry, I forgot one more. I can't forget the OEF, the Olentangie Education Foundation. We just recently completed our scholarship reviews, and on those three evenings, the OEF will be handing out about $30,000 in scholarships.
Wow, great. Stacy, school funding actually committee, school funding in June?
Yes. This is important to everybody in the community. Right now, the, our state government is going through the budget process, and part of the budget process is state school funding. The governor's plan was released in January. In that plan, Olentangie was going to be receiving additional funding for growth, which we have never received in the past. In fact, our funding is severely behind the rest of the states, or the rest of the school districts in the state. We receive about $330 in state funds, when the average is about $3,200. That proposal went to the House. The House nixed the governor's proposal, came up with their own proposal. It's not beneficial to Olentangie at all. Brett Knuckles, who's in the audience tonight from This Week News, has a very nice article explaining that process and what it means to Olentangie. So go back tonight and read This Week News, and you can see what has happened to Olentangie. Basically, we are being penalized because of our high property wealth and our high median income. And I have told our elected officials that does not translate to dollars in people's pockets necessarily, that they want to be spending on local property taxes. For years, our portion of state funding has been sent to other school districts throughout the state that are not as efficient or as high-performing as Olentangie. The budget is now in the Senate, and the Senate president yesterday said they will use the governor's funding formula, but tweak the numbers. We don't know what tweaking the numbers means, but I highly suggest that you now contact your senator, your state senator, which is Chris Jordan, and the members of the Senate Education Finance Subcommittee. And their information is on the back table, we've copied it off. It's also on our website, and it's imperative that people know what Olentangie has gone through during these explosive growth years. Because I'm telling you, they are hearing from the other school districts. They did a whole parade through of why poor school districts, and I don't mean poor necessarily poor people, but poor wealth school districts, land property-wise, why they deserve more money. And they're the ones who've been getting all of our money for years and years and years. Dr. Lucas has an article also in This Week News that explains that process. He went down and testified, spent a Good Friday at the State House, testifying in front of the House, the House Finance Committee. And he will do it again, in front of the Senate Education Finance Subcommittee, and the Senate Finance Committee, and anybody else who needs to hear him. But they need to hear from us, because they're hearing from everybody else, and they don't believe that our growth is true. They don't, they, they are totally ignoring us. We need to contact Chris Jordan and the members of the Senate Education Finance Subcommittee. Their information is, is in the back. And if anybody has any questions on school funding in the process, you can email me, I'll be more than happy to answer any of your questions. But it's time that Olentangie gets their fair share in state funding. It's a matter of keeping us off the ballot for several more years, if we can get the additional funds that are actually due to us.
And then, Dr. Lucas and I, is Todd joining us?
Yep.
We're going to go down and meet with Senator Jordan. Well, then, we're hoping within the next week or so. Again, continue to kind of tell our story, and make sure, you know, our efforts are being placed where we think we can, you know, make a difference. Okay. Adam, anything, update from the groups that you've chosen to engage?
The policy committee, the first meeting I went to, I proposed to change the inter-district transfers. The second meeting, I wasn't able to make it.
Okay. With that, I'll wrap up my piece, finally, and then, sir, for, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, good evening, everyone. It's great to have a full house here again tonight. It's been so long, I think six weeks since we got together. Right? Does it sound right? Something like that. As they say, you know, we have many, many things happening in the Olentangie schools, and sometimes we agree, and sometimes we disagree. But I believe that Julie hit upon the thing that we should all be agreeing on, and I'm going to talk even more about that here in this, in this PowerPoint. I guess hold on to your seats, because I have a lot of things to talk about, and I'll try to give you the Cliff Notes version, but those of you that know me well, I don't know what Cliff Note means. So, with that said and done, let's talk a little bit about good things, because we have many. And before I get into this, this PowerPoint, I want to talk about a great thing, and that was the Indian Springs Elementary performance. You know, when you walk down there, I think it kind of grounds you as to why we're in this business. And again, I'll talk about, we agree on things, we disagree on things, but one thing we better all be agreeing on is the fact that we are blessed to be in a very, very good community with great, great kids, great staff members, great parents. And I think if, if some of you were able to go down and watch that performance, I think you'd feel the same way. If you can't come out of that performance without smiling, I think you're in the wrong, wrong room. You know, you need to be at a different meeting somewhere. So with that said and done, I also want to talk about two things that has been in the news here this past week. The Washington Post Challenge Index rankings, the U.S. News &amp; World Report rankings, and of course, both these reports really get to the core of college readiness and rigor at the high school level. And as you can see, once again, we did very well. Now granted, we don't know anyone at the Washington Post, and we don't know anyone at U.S. News &amp; World Report. At least I don't. Someone in here may know someone. But some of the things that came out of those reports, our high schools, all three, Orange, Liberty, Olentangie, top in Central Ohio, among the top 10 in the state, among the top 345 in the nation in the Washington Post Challenge Index. U.S. News &amp; World Report, three of the top four in Central Ohio. Three of the top four, keep in mind, we have three high schools total. In Central Ohio, we had three of the top four, among the top 11 in the state, among the top 221 in the nation. Again, if you can't be proud of that fact, I'm not sure what you can be proud of. So, we're very, very pleased with these individuals. We're very pleased with the work that our staff has done. And I say this every year, these awards are somewhat the end of the journey for our kids, but that journey was made up starting in preschool and working all the way through the system. And we're very proud of the fact that we are ranked among the top in the nation, and obviously, when we say 221, 345, we do want to be number one, and that's what we continue to work toward. Next thing on good things, we had, at Olentangie Orange, we had the multicultural fair, April 19th. Great turnout, great program, and again, you've hit that whole piece, and you've heard here, and we're going to have to report tonight, that diversity piece and how we are changing. And we had a great event on April 19th at Orange. We also, I don't know if you, this past weekend, were able to see successful musicals, Seussical at OHS and Beauty and the Beast. I was presenting to a group of senior citizens, I believe, on Tuesday of this week, and they were so proud of the fact that at Olentangie High School, the service club brought them in and allowed them to take part or view that play. And they want to do more of that, obviously. They continue to want to do more of that, and it's a very, very good entertainment value for our senior citizens, and of course, anyone else that wants to participate. On May 9th through the 12th, Liberty will perform Smile, the musical. So again, I encourage you, just as we saw Indian Springs, this is the older version of those types of performances, and I would highly encourage you to take advantage, because we have extreme talent in this school district, and we're very proud of that. BPT, Internet Safety Forum, that would be the parent program team, May 1st at OHS. If you don't have kids, you may not get much out of this. If you do have kids, or are going to have kids, you better get there, that whole internet safety piece, because it just changes every day. And when I sit and I watch us adults try to really get a grasp on this whole technology piece, and I watch kindergartners that know more than we do from the digital piece, we better get on board and understand and know what's going on. So, our parent program teams will be providing that Internet Safety Forum on May 1st. 35 elementary, middle school students were presented to Olentangie at the Regional Innovation Convention on May 18th. I don't know if you got to go to the District Arts Festival on April 14th, and I, I wish you could, from way back, could see the types of talents that we have, and if you can't see that, I would encourage you just walk into a high school, because much of that artwork is still there. The talents that they have, I feel extremely blessed to be around such, such talent, and I would encourage you, take part in that. I'm going to talk, this whole state funding slide, because I have to tell you, sometimes it's one of those, take three steps forward and possibly four steps back. One thing we all have in common in here, is we all pay taxes. We pay a lot of them, if you live here. And when I look at this, this whole state funding piece, and I was extremely encouraged when the governor put forth the proposal that he did near the end of January. Because we walked out of there, out of that meeting, and we were highly encouraged, for the first time in a decade. For 10 years, we've grown 1,000 students per year, that's 10,000 students, by the way. And during that 10 years of growth, our state funding was approximately $7 million. Now again, many of you tell me to run it like a business, and I'm going to challenge anyone to continue growth like that, which by the way, they don't move here because of the traffic, they like sitting in traffic. They move here many times because of the schools. Anytime you have success like that, continue to grow in the business world, you're usually rewarded for that. First, unfortunately, on our end, it's not so much of a reward. It's one of those, keep doing well, we love what you're doing, and as you know, I'm the guy that comes to you and says, we need more money. So I'm not one of those popular guys during those levy cycles. So, when the governor put that out and was actually referencing the words Olentangie, because many didn't even know where Olentangie was, I was highly encouraged, and it went to the House. And then that was one of those two steps back deals, because the House placed some caps on all that money that we were supposed to get. That increased, by the way, even though it was 330%, I don't know, anyone in here can spend percentages, we spend dollars in our business, I think you probably do the same. That was an increase of approximately $14 million, and it was going to make us feel pretty good. The House took it away, went down to the, the House Finance and Appropriations Committee on April 12th and testified, and I think, as Julie said, many people don't know our story. What's different about Olentangie? Well, a lot of things are different, but one thing that's definitely different is the fact that we're growing. And we're growing at rates that no one in this state has ever seen, and in fact, in the nation, we're usually in the top 10 or so. We've been the fastest-growing district in the state of Ohio for the last 10 years. We are in constant contact with local lawmakers, state educational organizations, but as they say, all politics are local. This thing really starts at the local level. If we sit up here and think that someone from Southern Ohio is going to feel sorry for Olentangie, we are badly mistaken. Now, the thing I put down at the bottom of this slide is the one thing that can make us all work together, for one thing. We might disagree on a lot of things, but if we can't work together on potential tax relief for everybody in this room, I'm not sure what we can work together on. So I'm going to encourage everyone in here, reach out, reach out to Chris Jordan. I, I talked with Mr. White beforehand, even talking about this whole Chris Jordan piece, and he's assured me that he will talk to Mr. Jordan. And I know, I've already had board members that have reached out to Mr. Jordan. I'm also encourage you, because I have to tell you, the governor's proposal helped us, and I know I make Mr. Johnson nervous, the treasurer, when I start talking about, how long will the money last? I'm not going to say 20 years, so, you know. What I am going to say is, you're going to see some tax relief if the state comes through and gives us what we deserve, because you've gone above and beyond the call of duty. We do appreciate what you've done in regard to that, but you've gone above and beyond the call of duty to keep this district moving in the right direction. So I would encourage everyone to take advantage of the process and call the legislators, because we can get you some tax relief for a substantial amount of time. Very quickly, Race to the Top update, I'm going to go, start going a little quicker here. Transformation Team, meeting April 16th. We had what's called a stop-take meeting with Scott Spears, I believe it was two weeks ago, and we had the whole Race to the Top team around the table, and we just basically talked about the entire process over the past three years. Again, I can't say enough about our staff, because we put forth the time that we've put forth in Race to the Top for $41,000 a year for our district. But what it's allowed us to do is be at the table. And if you're not at the table, you can't make a decision, because if you're not there, no one cares what you, what you think. So we've been at the table. I credit our teachers, I credit Elaine Eddy for that, because she really rallied the troops. And there were times when we wanted to walk away from the table, but we're still there. And we continue to provide feedback on draft policy 3220, on that whole teacher evaluation piece. We are a lighthouse district in regard to that. Many, many districts are so far behind where we are, and I can't say enough about the individuals in the system that have stepped forward and really carried this race to the top. And we'll continue down that road. New state report cards. And again, I know that got a lot of press, system begins soon, even though it begins this fall, we did some simulations already. I believe it becomes official in '15 or '16. But it does assign letter grades, instead of ratings. It is a more rigorous standard, tougher standards, which is exactly what we want. We released simulations about a month before the state did, because being in the business as long as I have, I know how this stuff works, and, you know, I knew the state would be releasing things. So, we got those documents to the board members and said, here's what it looks like. We did receive mostly As and Bs, I will tell you, we had some Cs and we had some Fs. And I will tell you also that when Mr. Fede gives his annual report tonight, we rate them as Met and Not Met, and we've done it for 10 years, and you're going to see some Not Mets. State report, the new state report card may say Fs, may say Cs, but when that comes out, we do have some areas of weakness, specifically value added in the gifted arena, value added in the students with disabilities arena, and we are continuing to zero in on where we need additional resources and where we need additional help. Our principals, our curriculum people are available at any time to address your questions on these areas. We are definitely not ashamed of anything that we have on there that would look detrimental to us, but you can be assured that if we have a C, or if we have an F, and I don't say anything much about Ds, because they don't seem to exist in this new report card system, not sure how that works. But we will continue to work toward that, and Mr. Fede will address that even further when he gives his annual report. Another thing that goes right along with that new report card would be remediation rates, and, you know, I think that's, this is almost becoming like the, the old Johnny Carson Show and Karnack. If you remember Karnack, you know, he would have the envelope up there and make the prediction, and everybody has a different version of- and everybody has a different version of remediation rates and as you can see in English, for the kids in our system, which it measures kids in our system, that go to Ohio Public Colleges and Universities, that's 55% of our kids. Remediation rates in English would be 8% in math, 20% in English and math, meaning they need remediation in both, 5% in English or math, 23%. Now I know sometimes there's numbers out there like 30% and I have to tell you, I look up and down all those numbers, I don't see a 30 on there. How it gets to 30, I'm not sure. I do know this, logically speaking, if you took a stats class, remediation rate's going to be somewhere between 23 and 5. And of course, next year, we have more specific criteria as what designation remedial courses. On the other side, as you can see, those that attend all colleges, I believe we have around 715 kids in the class of 2011, going all colleges, English 4%, math 10.9%, English and math 2.6%, English or math 12.5%. How we know that? We know in order to get into an out-of-state college or a private college or university, they're probably not going to accept you if you have to take remedial courses, because they're highly selective. So we want to always keep that in mind and I still go back to my favorite president, Ronald Reagan, when he used to say, "Figures don't lie, but liars can figure." We can do a lot of things with numbers, but those are the numbers and logic would tell you that we're doing very well. Are we where we want to be? Absolutely not. You know what our remediation rate needs to be? Zero. Because if you don't have kids in college yet, you better start saving. And we don't want those kids to be spending money on courses that they should have at the high school level. So we'll continue to work on that remediation rate. Very quickly, agenda items, we'll have the annual report, we'll have an adult facilitation task force which deals with diversity, we'll have student handbook revisions. Another one I want to hit, retire, rehire hearings, we have two at the teaching level and we also have our assistant superintendent, Linda Martin, who is retiring and coming back through the East Central Ohio Service Center. We have a total of seven retire, rehire positions for this upcoming year, resulting in a savings of $220,000. Over, since 2009, we've saved 787. Now, I have to tell you, you may be for retire, rehire, you may be against retire, rehire, I think that's a choice that we all make. I think once you get to really understand what it's all about, I'm not sure how you can deny almost $800,000 in savings. That's a savings. $800,000 in five years and every year 220,000. So we will be acting on those tonight. Food Service Supervisor is on the agenda. I know I put in my board update that Mr. Marsh and Mr. Gordon kind of went back and forth for about three years or so on that whole piece and it was, from my seat, it was reassuring to know that we're spending tax dollars efficiently, because Mr. Marsh would say, "Okay, I haven't had enough proof or rationale that we need that." Again, since that three-year battle, we've grown about 3,000 students, so we are adding a food service supervisor tonight. We are transitioning our high school dean positions to assistant principals and again, with the new teacher evaluation system coming forward, we're going to need a lot more people to evaluate, to do evaluations. Currently, deans cannot evaluate teachers. By changing them from being the dean to being the assistant principal, which is basically a change in job description, they now can evaluate, they now can cover events after school and in some cases, they are hired at a lower cost, because some are on the teacher's salary schedule. So that's the reason that we're doing the whole dean piece. We also have some automatic non-renewals of August hires. Every year, we hire teachers in August with the understanding that they're automatically non-renewed. And if they're doing the job, that's basically a probationary period, we'll come back in May and rehire them. So they're on the agenda. We have new contracts already for 13, 14. It looks like we're going to need about 65.5 positions, 34 due to growth, which is much lower than it's been in the past, 24 because of resignations and retirements, seven because of leave of absence. By the way, those resignations, as you know, between now and probably July 10th, they'll continue to go up, so that number will change as we head toward the July 10th deadline. We have the Olentangy Professional Development Academy and the New Teacher Academy payments in there. Every year, when we hire new teachers, we put them through the New Teacher Academy, three-day program, it's basically an orientation at $150 apiece, which is $50 a day. Again, I'll go back to the private sector, if you aren't paying them $50 a day, I'm not sure they'll come to work for you, but at any rate, that's what we pay our New Teacher Academy people. We have some administrative resignations and retirements. Outside of Linda, we also are losing Julie Nolan at Souda Ridge, she's taking a job with Upper Arlington, that's where she lives. She's done a great job for 13 years and it's obvious we're going to miss Julie. We also have the student fee schedule as listed on your agenda. We have new breakfast pricing, since 2005, when we started the breakfast program, we've been charging a dollar 25. That started at Orange Middle, I believe, and now we are recommending that we raise that to a dollar 50 after, what, eight years at a dollar 25. We have bus purchases, I believe there are nine and we went over that long-term transportation plan last year. We have facility use fees, we have an application for improvements to school facilities at Olentangy Orange for the turf, that's why you see some of these individuals sitting here in their orange and blue. We have the sewer capacity fees, which by the way, you think, "Why so long?" We're just now getting the cost proposal for those sewer capacity fees and I believe they're at right around $110,000 and that would put, as they say, the end to that whole Berkshire sewer capacity. We have Shanahan Middle School grandstand and press box that needs updated, it's been many years since that's happened. And last but not least, we are adding additional lockers at Orange, just like we did at Liberty earlier in the year, so that the capacity of that building will hold approximately 2,000 students. I think that's it. I would entertain any questions from the board at this time. All right, seeing none. Thank you.
Next item is the treasurer's report, Mr. Johnson.
I have a few items. Agenda items first, I wanted to point out one of the classified resignations you'll find is Julie Clace. She's been in the payroll department since the year 2000. She was a great employee and a great person and she'll be missed, she took a job a little closer to home. And the treasurer's action items, you'll see a bond issue for $7.3 million resolution there. This is based on the 2011 bond issue, this is money that would be for capital improvements, technology and buses through summer of 2015. Part of that 2011 bond issue that we're not touching is the $15 million for Elementary 16, that money won't be, won't even be issued until or if Elementary Number 16 is needed. A couple of things about the timing of the $7.3 million issue. One, it makes sense to take advantage of the current bond interest rates, but probably more importantly, two, a few months, a couple of months ago, we approved the Build America Bonds refunding. It makes sense to combine these into one issue and do them at once. That Build America Bonds refunding, the holdup on that is until we get our actual subsidy payment and we see that that subsidy payment has been decreased because of the sequestration, that's the factor that will allow us to move forward. So we're thinking that'll most likely be early June, earliest would be late May, so that's when those will take place. That Build America Bonds refunding should, we're estimating it'll be about $4.2 million in savings and that's a conservative number, because that's not actually taking into account the decrease in the subsidy. Looking at the financials, our real estate tax revenue is up about a half a percent. I'll give a more detailed update in May when we go through the forecast, but there's a portion of that I think will carry through the forecast as an increase, but then a probably bigger portion of that's more of a one-time funding. You notice in the appropriations, a really big increase in appropriations in the bond retirement fund, that's just due to the most recent bond refunding that we did in March, I believe. Hot topic right now is the Affordable Care Act. Kind of trying to make a long story short, if we're going to be giving insurance to more people, that means our insurance costs are going to go up. There's multiple fees and also changes in law that will have an effect on us and we're tracking those and learning as even more information comes in. Most significantly, on the fee side, there's going to be a $63 fee per covered life, which that will infect Olentangy a little over $315,000. That change will take effect January of 2014. Some of the other changes, we're estimating that will lead to an increase in premium of 3% to 5% and that's in addition to our, you know, annual renewal as well. Finally, just, you know, everybody's given a state funding update, so I might as well give my two cents as well, I won't go into too much detail, but Julie did mention that we're being, with the House version, we're being penalized for our high wealth and high property values, but I think it's also, one point I like to make is that with that version, we're also being penalized for our high student enrollment growth. With that 6% cap, that formula shows us losing $24.7 million in funding because of the cap. But what's even more important is if you look in the out years, while that 6% growth cap allows us to get a little bit extra money each year, the amount that we're getting hurt and penalized from that cap actually goes up each year, because as we continue to grow 600, 700, 800 students a year, the amount that we're penalized by the cap is going up faster than the amount of the little bit extra that we're getting.
Just to piggyback on what Todd said, the state, well, the House has come up with a formula that says that it costs $5,720 to educate a student. That's been about the same for a while, they went back to that figure, the governor had a different figure, but we get $330 of that, that's just to show you the discrepancy there.
That's all.
Thank you, Todd. Public participation session number one for general comments?
One, just one.
I'd like to thank you for your time. You all were given out one of these, if you pull it out now.
Name and address for the...
I'm sorry, yes, Douglas Gibby, address is 9558 Creighton Drive, Powell, Ohio.
And you've got five minutes.
That doesn't count against the five, does it? The address...
We'll give you that.
All right, if you'll turn to page two, you have five seconds to answer that problem. Okay, everybody got, got it? At a recent celebration, an eighth grader at Orange Middle School answered the problem correctly in five seconds. Math Counts is a national competition, which is the premier competition in middle schools. How I got involved was in 2010, Kathy McFarland, who I like to laud as a great administrator, asked me to coach the Hyatt's team, I had the daughter there. By parental request, I also coached the Orange Middle School teams. All three middle schools, the other three middle schools also have a team. In January, we had a district competition at which 100 students showed up and competed. The objectives I had in doing this was developing and extending the gifts of gifted math students in a competitive environment and to provide Olentangy schools, students with a forum to enhance their chances to be national merit semifinalists. The superintendent has aptly described what a great job we're doing for many. We don't do real well for gifted people, we just don't have that many national merit semifinalists and I wanted to fix that. I also wanted to prove that we can compete with premier school districts. If you'll turn to the next page, I'm sorry that I didn't, the rules are I can't use a PowerPoint or I'd share this all with you too, but you can see that our performance has been remarkable and that we now are ahead of Dublin in this competition. I use Dublin because they are somewhat the same size we are, they actually, along with Olentangy, are not as productive in terms of gifted math competitors per capita as our schools such as New Albany and Upper Arlington, but nevertheless, I thought it was a good mark to use. Where do we go from here? My involvement is finite. I'm not going to be here very much longer, if not just because I'm losing too much hair and I also don't think straight very much anymore. But I want to point out that the premier competitors that we run up against provide their coaches with study materials. We already have a library that is in place that can be used, but it needs to be monitored and enhanced. Secondly, premier competitors, I'm talking again about the New Albinys and Upper Arlington's, they compensate their math coaches. This is not an issue of finding more money. I get gifts a year, which is more than what you would need to compensate a good math coach for. And so my interest in you is to point out what can be done, there is some momentum here. I would like and be willing to work with anyone you would suggest to institutionalize what I've been doing in the district and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Quick question, quick question, exactly. What's the answer? The process and the answer. How do you know on your question?
Oh, the answer, well, if we have time.
We'll allow it.
Five seconds. Okay, you divide the perimeter by two, in order to maximize the area, you want to have your length and width as close as possible. So you want them seven and six, which will give you an area of 42. If you're a really good debate maker, it's not a problem to do it.
You're going to have to stay after and explain it. Thank you.
Would we have Mr. Ray follow up, this gentleman, to see his academic responsibilities, how we can kind of get in this project?
Yes.
Okay, discussion items, up first is the turf update. I'd like to call it Mike Bull first, it wasn't on the agenda, but Mike Bull will give a quick overview from the turf committee, followed by Robert Fuller of Development Committee and then Jeff Gordon from the administration. So Mike, please go ahead.
Mike Bull, 59, 73 Highland Hills Drive.
This is a public conference.
Oh, sorry. Well, now you all know where I live. Just in case you're wondering. So thanks for having us here, we wanted to come before you tonight, I think we have some good news in regards to turf and I'd like to kind of remind everybody, kind of take us back, last summer, we separated into three separate high schools. So I represent Olentangy Orange High School and we are a volunteer group that was organized specifically to finance install synthetic turf at Orange High School. The estimated cost, the actual cost, is right at around $500,000 and that amount is 100% privately funded. We have done an RFP process and we have selected a vendor and it would be the intention to begin installation in June, finishing August 1st. I want to take us back to why we're doing the project and some specifics around the project. First of all, there were two key reasons why we felt turf was a good idea for the community. First of all, we felt that the high school fields themselves were a not often-used asset and it's an expensive asset for the district to upkeep. We figured the typical cost to use that facility at about $1,222 per use, that's with what goes into maintenance and everything else divided by the number of uses. With a synthetic turf field, the cost per use goes down to about $43 per use. We also believe it provides a higher quality and more consistent playing surface. So the first reason was better use of an asset. Second reason was safety. We know for a fact that a synthetic turf field is safer than natural grass when it comes to head injuries. And I think we're all familiar with the fact that severe brain trauma is really becoming an issue, particularly in football and other sports and as we're, we have physicians now studying that and monitoring that, it's becoming a serious issue. ratings are done before every game, and if the field exceeds a certain level, the game is canceled. And that hasn't happened yet, but they're also pouring a lot of money into those fields. We know that there is no significant increase in knee injuries when compared to natural grass. We also know that the quality of the actual synthetic turf has improved drastically in the last 10 years. As far as the quality is concerned, we strive to look at the highest quality field we could possibly put in. The field is guaranteed by the vendor for eight years. That guarantee would be immediately transferable to the school district upon completion of the field. So all those warranties are transferable to the school district. Olentangie schools will be on that warranty. We have run this past the Development Committee. They've completed an in-depth review of the project specifications. Our project meets and exceeds all the standards that were created by the Development Committee. As far as financing is concerned, there are no funds or guarantees by the Olentangie School District. Our financial plan meets all the guidance established by the Board of Education last July 2012. I'll pass out to everyone a document by our attorney, Carlisle Patchen and Murphy, that basically confirms that all the financing is in place. And I will mention that the financing is made up of three things. It's made up of individual contributions, so cash on hand, individual contributions, and a commercial loan. As far as maintenance and replacement, I think folks from the Development Committee and Mr. Gordon will go into that in depth, but it will be the responsibility of the district. It is consistent with current gifting policy and practices. We believe that the cost of replacement to be somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000. The surface is obviously guaranteed for eight years. We believe we'll get 10 years out of it. And as I mentioned, Mr. Gordon will go into detail on the Development Committee and the replacement costs. So the Orange Turf Committee would formally request that the School District Board of Education approve the facilities change form this evening in order for us to move forward with the gift of synthetic turf with the installation to begin this June of 2013. Thank you.
Mr. Fuller? So we've asked Mr. Fuller to come in from the Development Committee to describe to us the process in which they went through, which Julie and Stacy witnessed and participated in, to establish the standards and their views of the project specs. Ralph Law is also here as chairman of Development Committee. Mr. Fuller?
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I hope to be able to give you a brief summary of what we've been through here. For me, this whole process started last year, as we've mentioned here just a few minutes ago. Unfortunately, funding did not materialize, and the issue kind of faded into the background, but it came roaring back earlier this year. And at that time, we decided that it would be a good idea for some members of the committee to learn a little bit about artificial turf. And Mark Nichols, who is a manufacturer of that material, came and spoke to us, and he was very generous. He was here several hours going over the nuts and bolts of artificial turf. And after that meeting, I think a lot of us decided that there are so many choices that we needed to try to establish some kind of criteria for those fields. And so at our next formal meeting, we did go through a long list of items from how the fields might be used to vendor qualifications, and we came up with some criteria for the parents to use in their funding efforts. After that meeting, we also talked to another individual, Greg Galetti, who is an architect and specializes in athletic facilities, and just happens to know quite a bit about artificial turf. And we were, we met with him, Jeff, Michelle, and myself met with him. He talked to us about many of the things that Mark had said and enlightened us even further. And we were so impressed with him that we had the specifications for the orange field at that time, and we asked him to review them and give us some comments, which he did, and he gave us some very good comments. He did such a good job, we asked him to do the same thing on the Liberty's field specs, and he did that. After going through that process, at our next meeting, the Development Committee decided that they should congratulate, first of all, Jeff and Michelle on their outstanding efforts in putting all this together, and secondly, to formally adopt the criteria that they had established. And lastly, we wanted to have some assurance during the construction that things were going well and things were being done properly. So we enlisted the services of Bill Sullivan, who has been involved in much of the construction of our buildings over the past several years, and again, Greg Galetti, because of his experience in turf and drainage and all kinds of issues that needed to be addressed. So we felt like, after having that criteria and having helped during the construction phase, that we had made a good effort to try to make sure that, first of all, we got a quality field, and secondly, that we had consistency among the three high schools. And that's why we did what we did, and that pretty much summarizes, I hope briefly enough, what we have done. And I appreciate the opportunity to be here. Thank you.
Questions?
I just want to point out, just like they have specs on buildings, now there are specs on turf.
That's right.
It's a painful process.
That's correct, yeah. Like I said, we believe that the process we went through was rigorous, and we believe we brought forth a good set of all these specifications, and that we could hold the committees accountable for the specifications we felt that they had made the specifications. So we're not judging whether it's worthwhile or not. We're staying from a technical standpoint that they made specifications, I would believe that they did.
And the quality of those volunteers, I thank every day that we have such committed volunteers that work with our district, because we would have to pay some serious money for the volunteers that sat around it and did this work, and I'm so impressed with the work of that committee, and I was proud to witness it, and I just appreciate the work that you worked on.
One thing that really came forward was that in talking to other high schools in the area, nobody else did the amount of work that this committee did. When Jeff Gordon asked them, you know, about specs, well, what specs did you use? They could not produce them. This group has, I can't even, I was in at least five hours of meetings, over two meetings with you all. Dave was in meetings, Stacy was in meetings. The amount of time that they've put into this is unprecedented in the area. So I really appreciate the work that they have put into this, because they took it seriously.
Terrific. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Jeff, if you'd mind, our placement. Well, Jeff's getting ready, I think the same kind of recognition admiration does go for the turf committees as well, for their work to date, so countless hours there.
I wasn't in any of those meetings, so I can't...
And I would also like to compliment both the turf committee and the Development Committee. Development Committee, as they mentioned, spent hours, and not just on this project, all projects, as school officials, we don't, can't be experts on everything. Some would probably argue we're not experts on anything, but we try. But the expertise that Development Committee brings to all of our projects is huge and really, really helps us out. And to the credit of the turf committee and the schools, the specs that they brought, there were very little adjustments we had to make. I mean, the specs they brought us were quality specs. It wasn't that we set a standard, went back and had to go back and say, okay, now you've got to increase what you've specced. The specs came in at or above what we were asking for, so to their credit, they brought a quality spec to us. I just, little briefly, wanted to touch on some of the safety. There are several items that have reports, injuries, sports injuries being the first of a turf, and I tell you, every report you go to, you find something different. And just in summary, what we found in talking with some experts and talking with people at Michael Health and research and studies that have been done, what we found is, in general, turf from grass to turf, there's sports injuries on both, they transfer. And some you have injuries on an ankle, whereas you might get on turf, maybe it's a knee or vice versa. In all the studies, they weren't real conclusive, even the one I think a lot of people stand by, the Stanford study, he says himself that it was an inconclusive study. It was so close, it was inconclusive. You know, what they'll say is that the grass fields, a well-maintained grass field is probably the best thing for athletics, but very few organizations, including pro sports, can keep that, because of weather, use, and, you know, in our case, here at Olentangie, our high school fields, if you look at where we started out just last football season, all of our fields from top of the press box, we took some pictures, they looked great. The grass was green, the grass was thick. By game seven, you couldn't hardly see the grass. So, you know, and then we go into winter and try to get that back before the cross season. The cross does not ever have a quality field to play on, because they start so early in the spring that we just don't have time to maintain it. Or even if we can get between the melt, the snow, and get the grass, the seed, fertilizer down, there's not time for it to grow before they start participating on it. So it's always a battle. So, you know, to go back to the study, we don't, you know, we certainly don't have well-maintained fields. We do the best we can, but we don't have well-maintained fields. Couple other areas was, you know, the chemical exposure, there was some concern about lead and things, air quality with the students participating on it, leaching into the water, that type of thing. And there's been several studies on that as well. The State of New York did a study, because they are the biggest user of turf at the secondary level. Again, because of weather and in the city, the not having a lot of space, they have turf. So the state did a study, concluded that the turf was safe, there weren't any levels of chemicals that were hazardous, and as well as the State of California, and the U.S. Consumer Product Safety Commission also did a study, was deemed that the turf was not a concern there. The other concern out there, the main one, was infection, MRSA, and what the studies found with the turf is, especially, they did an indoor study and outdoor study, and I'll just reference the outdoor studies, with the UV from the sunlight kills that almost immediately, that it's not a concern whether it's on grass or on turf, that UV takes care of that. They did note finding some bacteria on things like the blocking sleds and some of the equipment, same as we have now, and keep that clean. And we do the same thing indoor, in the weight room, and basketball courts, all of our equipment, we have to maintain and watch for that. So that does not create any more of a concern for us there. And the last one that I skipped over, and I'll jump back, the sports injuries. The biggest thing about the turf and the most serious injury is head injuries in sports. And there's, all studies out there concluded that with the new turf, with the rubber infield, that as far as traumatic head injuries, turf is the safest thing. Even our grass fields, a lot of times are harder than the turf is, and especially later in the year, when it gets colder, the ground gets harder, it gets packed from all the feet. So with the turf, you maintain that softness throughout the season and throughout the term of the field being on there. And they mentioned, Mike mentioned earlier about the warranty, there is a warranty on what they call the GMAX rating, which is the density of the turf as far as for head injuries, and our warranty requires that they maintain that GMAX rating. There's things we do to groom the field, but if that grooming does not take it to the GMAX level that's deemed acceptable, then by warranty, they have to come back out and make that field acceptable to us again. And that's tested on a regular basis. The other item to speak on was a projected turf replacement, and I passed out. And these are our projections, a couple of these things have to be acted on by the board, but the plan we put together is to utilize gate receipts from the stadium, the 10% of the gate receipts, so we took the fiscal year 2012 gate receipts and took the 10% of that. Facility rental, including a contract with OYA that we're currently negotiating, that we'll be getting the rental fees back, put that towards the turf replacement. We have, we did a study actually last spring, when we were talking about turf for the first time, on the maintenance we would save, and we're not likely to reduce a maintenance person, so I didn't include labor in this, but just the materials for maintaining the field. So for all three fields, it was about $25,000 total. The maintenance saving then for this one particular field would be about $8,300. And of course, the board would have to act to appropriate that money towards that field each year, and that's, and the, so that gives us a total, and again, I think we'll get a 10-year life, just based on talking with other districts and where they're at. Some are seeing as many as 12 years. Our warranty is for eight, but we expect we're likely to get a 10-year life on that. The last item there is our beverage contract. Money was included in those for the scoreboards and some of the other athletics, and that money is still there, based on the last contract, it was extended twice, and we have not utilized that money for the, the scoreboards have worn out. And again, the board would have to set that money aside to go towards the replacement. And this is a third of that money, so that each field will have the same amount going forward. And you see, over 10 years, that just about covers it. And I think, based on the facility rental, we're probably being conservative on that. The majority of that money is from that OYA contract, and we expect to get some rentals from other organizations, there's sport groups coming in. I don't think it'll be as much as it may have been 10 years ago, when somebody, or some eight years ago, when like Dublin put their fields in, because now, you know, there's about three times as many fields, so we're all competing for the same events. So we're being conservative on that, but we think with a little bit of work, we can get more of that in.
From the additional equipment? Additional equipment that we need to...
The equipment for the fields is included in the donation.
We take that for $500.
From a gate receipt perspective, that's based on current usage, current, so if there, and I'm not talking about renting it to someone else, but if there are additional games that move up to use that field because they could, so they start to charge for middle school or whatever, that could increase, correct?
Yeah. Or other groups, or other, you know, band competition, or lacrosse tournament, or other things that they would put in there, that, you know, receipts, or state tournaments, whatever they can get from that, so.
I was working concessions at the, the night it rained nonstop and had three delays. So by the time they started playing at about 8:30, it was a bit of a mess, and they were having lots of conversations of people maintaining the field, that they were looking for sand to pull out of the pit, to lay down on the field, to try to even make it playable, and those kids were troopers and won 12 to 1, but it was a messy night.
Yeah. But last year, we had a better spring, so the fields were in better condition in the spring. This year, it was just, we had extremely bad fall, and we started the spring out the same way, and they're just, they're not in good shape. We try to move as many events to the middle schools as we can, some of the JV games, and, you know, split the boys and girls sometimes for like lacrosse and soccer, just to get them off, but it's, you know, it's not easy to keep the fields up.
And one more question, I'm sorry. On the residuals for the beverage contract, that's currently what the athletic groups get, and you're not taking that away from the music booth.
This is cash on hand.
This is cash on hand that was part of the...
Oh, original balance.
Yeah, it was the original contract. Contract's been extended twice before, no, actually, before I came here, eight years ago, so we've been living out that contract, but that's from that original contract.
Okay. Great. I just want to reference the safety issues that you brought up. Jeff has collected a bunch of studies, they're in this huge three-ring binder, he let me borrow it, and I took it home over a weekend, and went through the studies, so he has all of that data available.
That's in the back there.
Yeah, he's got it with him, if you want to see all that, all those studies. But coming from a parent of an athlete, you know, who's gone through surgeries, her surgeries were caused by wood on a basketball court. So we can't say that every student is, you know, going to be injury-free because of turf, but we have injuries in every sport that we participate in, whether it's on the softball diamond, or...
I just want to reference the safety issues that you brought up. Jeff has collected a bunch of studies, they're in this huge three-ring binder, he let me borrow it, and I took it home over a weekend, and went through the studies. So he has all of that data available.
That's in the back there.
Yeah, he's got it with him, if you want to see all that, all those studies. But coming from a parent of an athlete, you know, who's gone through surgeries, her surgeries were caused by wood on a basketball court. So we can't say that every student is, you know, going to be injury-free because of turf, but we have injuries in every sport that we participate in, whether it's on the softball diamond, or on the football field, or in the basketball court. And that's unfortunately, the life of sports. And if you want to read about head injuries, the Chicago Tribune had an article in yesterday that you should all read. Dave and I saw a clip, and so did the development committee, of a documentary on head injuries. And what I took from that, and our turf person, our turf consultant, was that your field should be treated just as well as you treat any other part of the uniform. We have our helmets inspected every year, we have the shoulder pads. You should also be inspecting the field that they're playing on. And with turf, you have a uniform field that can be inspected and almost guaranteed like your helmets. And that was eye-opening for me, because I never considered turf being part of, of the uniform.
And just a couple of things to add to that is, is one, the folder's about three inches thicker if you don't have anything to do this weekend.
Yeah.
But in addition to that, just to reference the studies, the hard part of the studies are several different things. You know, so they, there's so many components to look at. So with the field, when they, they compare events on a turf field versus events on a grass field, it's, okay, what's the weather? Because then they've got to allocate for weather, whether it's on turf or on grass. Then it's what shoe is the student wearing?
Right.
You know, because some of the injuries could be the shoes, on, on how the shoes wear. And it just, there's so many different variables, it's, it's really inconclusive to go back and forth with the sports injuries, or what, you know, what, which injuries come from which area. But for me, the, the most important is the head, and the head injuries and that, you know, concern there, and, and this certainly is, helps with that as much as we can, and still, still have the sports.
And I know the Stanford studies, they looked at both turf and grass, and out of 100,000 exposures, that's practice and games, out of 100,000 exposures, it could have been football, soccer, whatever you're playing on the field, for grass, you would have seen 14 injuries for every 100,000, and for turf, it was 18 injuries for every 100,000. So it's, it's, you know, four more injuries, you know, but the, the chief orthopedic surgeon with the Pittsburgh Steelers in that same study said, what the problem is, we believe, is the shoe on turf surface. So they're working with the shoe companies to come up, because the, you get better traction on the turf. So they're working with the shoe companies to come up with a resolution to that.
The shoe actually gets less traction.
So that's what they're working on. So interesting study.
Anything else? Thank you, Jeff.
You're welcome, Jeff.
Next up is Jack Fettig with the annual report on academic achievement. Just for the audience, I know you're probably getting a little antsy, you've been here for a while. We'll take action, or the board will have the opportunity to take action, and super ten action items on turf. So we've got a few more discussion items, if you bear with us, and we'll get through the action items.
It'll only take 45 minutes or so. I did. The purpose of this report is to provide you a snapshot of our achievement towards our goals, which we set annually in our continuous improvement plan. Now, in front of you, you have a copy of our annual report on academic achievement. We usually do this presentation in the fall, but as you are aware, the state embargoed a lot of data due to the auditor of states investigation into some school districts around the state. So we couldn't finalize this report until all that data was available just recently. If you want to follow along, in your books, everything that's going to be on the, on the screen is in the books as well, so if you want to turn to pages two and three to begin. One of the things I want to start out mentioning is that success is not static. Continuous improvement is needed, and it's the process of maintaining our success over time. So we're constantly looking at our expectations and our goals, and constantly tweaking and making adjustments as personnel change, as students change, on an annual basis to maintain and improve our success. The district CIP in total reports on six academic benchmarks that you see on pages two and three, one financial management benchmark, and one resource allocation benchmark. There are indicators within each of those. I'm only going to be presenting tonight on the academic benchmarks as is my role. On page four, you'll see benchmark one, which is our goal to achieve at or above our projected performance levels. We calculate internal projections for each student annually in tested areas, meaning where the students project to perform, proficient, accelerated, advanced, and so on. And we met that benchmark this year, 11 of our 19 subjects increased from the previous year or maintained at least 80%, which is the goal that's been board adopted. Benchmark two on page six is our value-added growth benchmark, there are two indicators there. Our district goal, that's again, board adopted, is to have above growth each year. That's the equivalent of an A rating on the new state report card, which I'll talk about at the conclusion of the presentation. For the second year in a row, we were above growth as a district. Moving on, page seven. Benchmark three is to meet state standards annually. That's our proficiency scores on state tests, our AYP, adequate yearly progress, which measures the 10 different subgroups that the state looks at annually, and our performance index, which is a measure of our overall achievement. Again, we met all of these indicators, and our performance index ranked us 39th in the state in terms of district, 39th highest PI, which is impressive for our size. On page 10, you see benchmark four, which our goal is to be at the top of the state and the nation. Included in that benchmark is our similar district averages, and again, the performance index. Benchmark five on page 12 is to increase the percentage of students at the advanced and accelerated levels, to continue to push our higher end up. There are three indicators within that benchmark, looking at our OAA and OTT levels, our advanced placement participation, 67.5% of our juniors and seniors participated in AP courses, and then our AP scores, and 70, or 80.8% of our students scored three or higher on an AP test, at least one AP test. Coincidentally, 30 or 40% of our students take four or more AP courses annually, and 20% take six or more AP courses, so high AP participation. Benchmark six is on page 14, and that is for preparation for life beyond graduation, and there are five benchmarks, or five indicators within that benchmark. Within that benchmark is the only indicator that we did not meet this year. We have a goal to annually decrease the percentage of our students taking remedial coursework in college, and Dr. Lucas referenced this during his report. We did not meet that goal because the percentage maintained 25%. If you remember back to his report, he reported to you that the remediation rate from, and this is based on Ohio Board of Regents data, only at Ohio public colleges, he reported to you that the rate is 23%. That's because that is the most current rate, but because this is a delayed report, we're staying consistent with our reporting from year to year. If we had reported in August, the most current rate would not have been out yet, so we're staying consistent with that. So already for next year, we know that we will be meeting this indicator, because we will have decreased it already. The rest of the report is thick, and it reports all of these benchmarks and indicators on each school in the district. It's available already on the district website, if you want to see your school or the district report, they're all up there. You go to administrative departments, curriculum and instruction, and then on the right column, there is a, a link to the annual report on academic achievement. So the other thing that I was asked to speak on is to explain a little bit more about Ohio's new report card. The interesting thing about the new report card, when you learn about it, is much like the six academic benchmarks that we just went over, the new report card measures six academic benchmarks for all the districts in the state, and there's been a lot of overlap of what Olentangie's been measuring for a decade, and what the state's going to be measuring right now. The first of those six components is achievement, those measures are performance index and performance indicators. We would earn an A on performance indicators and a B on performance index. Again, I mentioned that we were the 39th highest district in the state in performance index, that is only a B based on the new state report card. You have to be careful when you read each component and each indicator within components, because As and Bs and Cs mean different things based on different components. So you'll see up here that I provided you the calculations for each component. For the achievement component, you have to be within 90% to 100% for an A, so 108 is an A, performance index, and our performance index was 107.3. They don't give pluses or minuses. The next component is progress or value-added growth. Again, we have a CIP benchmark for value-added growth, and for all students, our growth was an A, it was met, we've always said met in the annual report. We'll probably be revising that this year, and you see the calculations at the bottom for A, B, C, D, and F. For what the state has historically reported as met, that is now the equivalent of all of the above, B, C, and D. All three letter grades now are what used to be known as met. A is two standard deviations higher than the mean. So our all students were in an A, our gifted students were at a B, and our students with disabilities, and the students at the lowest, 20% of achievement statewide. So among our students who had the lowest achievement statewide, their growth was a C, which is the equivalent of met. But again, we strive for all As here in Olentangie. The next component is graduation rate, also in our CIP. They are measuring two graduation rates now though, a four-year and a five-year, and you see that both of our grade simulations put us in an A for both of those. And that's simply looking at how many graduate, how many students graduate within four years of entering their freshman year, and then how many graduate within five years of entering their freshman year. And you notice the standard for the five year is higher than the three year by 2% or 20%, 95%. But again, we meet both of those. The next component is gap closing. This is what's currently known as AYP, adequate yearly progress. In the future, it'll be named, it'll be called AMOs, annual measurable objectives. We're still waiting to learn a lot about exactly how the state is going to be reporting these, or recording these, and calculating these different new measures. But the simulations that were provided us gave us a B in this area. Again, we met AYP last, in the last school year for this annual report, and the projection is a B based on these calculations, but I don't have all the answers for how those calculations are going, going to work still. A new component is K3 literacy. This is not currently in our CIP, it's something we might want to look at adding for future years, but it is something that we've measured for every student in elementary schools for years and years and years. We've always looked at literacy, it's the foundation of all learning. Every student is tested multiple times annually by their teacher, improvement plans are constructed, response intervention. None of these scores will appear until August of 2014. Lastly, there's the prepared for success, this is the benchmark six from our CIP also, life after, after high school, and this will not appear until August of 2015, but we will be highly rewarded, I anticipate, for our high AP participation, high AP success, our growing dual enrollment programs, our honors diplomas awarded. And those are all, our expectation is those are all equally, equally weighted. You don't have to do all of those things, they're going to measure how much of those things, how many students participate in any of those things, is how that measure is going to be calculated. That is a speedy report on the annual academic achievement and the new state report card, but again, you have lots of information to look at, and I encourage you to pour over the data and ask me questions at any time.
So maybe a process question, so then, will we have Mr. Fettig back, or some back from administration topic? Here are the areas that had opportunities for improvement, here are the action plans and the things that we're doing, either through curriculum, construction, that will then hopefully address those areas of weakness?
Glad to.
Just to kind of connect the dots. Scorecard said, because we're doing about it.
And we should put on the radar the revision of the CIP for next academic year, since the state measures are changing, it would probably make sense to check our alignment of what we want to continue to measure internally.
And you bring up a good point, because the state measures are changing, and, so this showed the change, but it was graded on last year's effort. So they were working toward, you know, a different report card, is what it is. So I want to point that out. And then the remediation changes, one thing I learned, and this is due to House Bill 153 that was passed in the summer, the Ohio Board of Regents realized that not all of the Ohio colleges and universities, well, actually universities, were using the same remediation numbers. So if you went to University A, their remediation number was X, and if you went to University B, their remediation was Y. And so they weren't consistent across the board, and then they also learned that, for whatever reason, they were changing now. And so we, nobody was aware of that. So one year, it might have been, you had a score of 21 on your math, on your ACT, and then the next year, maybe it was a 23. Were they doing that to have more students have to take remediation classes, and then they could charge them more money? Possibly, because of state funding cuts at the university levels as well. And so now, because of House Bill 153, everybody, all, I should say, all the public institutions in Ohio will be operating under the same criteria.
Thank you.
That's it? All right. Thank you, Jack. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is Heather Camacho, gives an update on the adult facilitation task force.
Good evening and thank you for your time tonight. My name is Heather Camacho. I've been with Olentangie Schools now for 12 years, serving as a classroom teacher. And up until this year, when I began splitting my time between my classroom, my third grade classroom at Oak Creek, part-time, and then also part-time serving as district diversity coordinator. In terms of our diversity and equity work in the district this year, we've had a lot of activity, but what we want to specifically talk to you tonight about is the work of our adult facilitation task force. And this is a group that was brought together in January as a part of our OCR resolution agreement, with a very specific objective in mind. And that objective was to discuss the racial issues and biases in the district that might appear, but more importantly, put a specific plan together that would address all of these concerns, each of these concerns, and, and, and issues that the group had. So this is 100% volunteer group, that is comprised of district staff members and parents, community members, administration, board of education members, of a variety of racial and ethnic backgrounds. Originally, the group was very, was, is a very specific and finite amount of time, we were going to have four meetings, and then they were going to dissolve after the task was accomplished. But because of their dedication, it's a very productive, effective group, and really dedicated group, but because of that, and, and the opportunities that they saw to continue to support the district, they decided to continue that work into the future. So we'll be meeting the rest of this year, into next year, and then beyond that, we'll just see where it takes us. But at this point, I'd like to introduce to you Ajay Gupta, who is a member of the task force, and he's going to be talking to you a little bit about the specifics of the action plan that they put together, as well as some of the experiences that they had, in order to gain context for the task at hand. So Ajay.
So as Heather mentioned, I'm part of this group, and I represent mainly the parents. I have a six, a seven-year-old going to first grade in Indian Springs. So we, we gathered together, and like, as she mentioned, it's totally a volunteer work that we did. It was done somewhere around January, February, and March timeframe, and it started with gathering the team together, and then the team comprised of parents, staff members, and staff members from administration and board of, board of education members. And then, very first meeting, we had, we had Dr. Ronda, who took us along with Ms. Heather, who, who gave us like the background of all the process that we had to go, that was planned for this, this activity. Then we had Mr. Pat Schmitz, District Attorney, who told us about the Office of Civil Rights, and explained what Title VI actually means, and how it, how it is, needs to be implemented. Then group was initially divided by grade level, then, then the issues and actions were, were built in the third and fourth meeting, where, where it was the groups were divided, not by grade level, but like the teacher-staff groups were built together, and then parent groups and district group groups were, about on the different issues and action plans. And then we consolidated the action, action plan. So out of that, and as I mentioned, third and fourth meeting, the action plan that we came up with, like, we gathered issues and we thought about what, what all, what kind of actions do we need to take on this? So let's say, the, this is, we, we built a comprehensive list, this is just. So let's say, this is, we built a comprehensive list, this is just some of the sample items from that list that we have here in this, on this slide, like subtle implicit racism in the form of comments or, and or gestures. So what, what can we do about that? So the task force thinks or proposed that we have the teacher performance, sorry, teacher professional development program, where we have some additional training that is, that is specific to teaching diversity. And I think a lot of work is already underway in this, this area, and that is being done, already being done there. And same as, like if, so another issue that was identified was not taking the characteristics and backgrounds of diverse population into the consideration when planning the instruction and the, the classroom material. So that's where, again, this, there will, there is a need to do some professional development there, where this task force can, can add value to it. And there are, maybe another, another action item that we thought about was like building some student groups, which is already there right now in middle school and high school levels, but the task force thinks that, I mean, it's, it'll be good to bring that, form that kind of groups in elementary school level as well, where as they grow older, they can embrace, embrace diversity in a bigger way. And then also build some online education material that is, that will educate the community members, parents, students, everyone, which, this is for the cultural group, if they're coming, if they're new to the area, they can get, get downloaded from the district website or some, someplace where it is placed. And for the existing community members also, to increase the cultural, cultural awareness between the community. And as part of that action plan, as I mentioned, the other, the other action plans that, that comprise is like the teacher professional development groups, student groups, as I mentioned, not only in middle schools and high school level, but at the elementary school level also. Take support from the parent support groups, like the parent-teacher organization that we have, PTOs, or maybe some, some other, I mean, we need to be creative to figure out how this message can be passed on to the community. And at district level, there are some action items, those are already, some of them are already underway as I, as I learned, but there are like, maybe expand, build a diversity mission statement, expand district diversity website to have more diversity education there. Use communication committee to spread this, that message out, expanding that diversity resources. I mean, if there are violations, how do we handle those violations? Maybe build a tiered discipline in response to those, those violations, whatever is, whatever Title VI suggests, how it can be implemented. And then, another way we can do it is update the welcome packet and the recruitment and detention material, whenever, like for the new batch, or whatever new batch is coming that is, and then incorporation of more culturally responsive teaching into daily lesson planning plans, as I mentioned. Again, use of online tools, videos or downloads from websites. I think there's a video already being prepared for, for this, this purpose, and maybe make it available to the public where, where this message can be spread across. So this is, that's what we, we went through, and I mean, this is, the task force, the group that we built, we think that that is, just making the action plan is not, not enough. We need to take this work forward. How we take this work forward, there is, there is still some more work that, that needs to be done here, and I think we have some further meetings planned for, for this, and going forward, we'll have those meetings and see how this plan is going to be implemented.
Okay, any questions from the board member, or comments?
Just a comment, as someone who sat through those meetings and participated in those meetings, here's yet another example of groups of parents and volunteers, appreciate your service, that gave up, sat through two and three hour meetings in their, in the evenings, and didn't do it and then say, okay, yeah, that was good. They said, can we keep, can we keep meeting? So yet another example of the quality of, of parents and cooperation we have, and the volunteers, and, and, you know, there's three or four nights a week where we, as board members, are involved in these sorts of things, and it warms, it warms my heart to, to, to see the level of volunteer dedication. Appreciate you coming tonight and representing that committee.
My pleasure.
But he's one of about 30 people that, that did this work, and it was impressive at the time, and great conversation, and I look forward to continuing with it forward, as I'm sure Julie does. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next item, student handbook revisions, 2013, 2014, Mr. Ray.
Good evening. We're here tonight to talk about the recommended changes to the elementary, middle, and high school handbooks for next school year. You were provided with an electronic copy of all three books and all of the recommended changes from our handbook committee. Just so you understand the process, we get together a group of administrators from all the levels, so that they do a thorough examination of, of the handbooks, get input from stakeholders in the buildings to see how those handbooks are working for us in terms of building operations. We went through a very thorough process last year when we updated all of our school policies, the Neola policies, that we went through a thorough process of matching a lot of the Neola language with, in the policy with our handbook language. So the, most of the recommended changes here are just the final cleanups of any Neola policies that we adopted with the recommended Neola language. So at that, I'll take any, any questions you might have. Yes, Mrs. Dunbar?
I got one. The one that I stumble over, having read all this, is under 10, number H.
If you, page, what of what?
Oh.
Middle school, high school?
I think it's on all three of them. So it, on page 20 of 143 is the first reference to it, and it's kind of an expansion of what is a weapon. So any object that's used to threaten, harm, or harass another may be considered a weapon. This includes, but is not limited to padlocks, pens, pencils, laser pointers, and jewelry. I understand the intent of that, but you're saying in this document that they have knowledge that someone possesses one, puts them in violation? And the way this reads to me is, I can turn someone in for having a pencil, and I'm hoping everyone has pencils in the school. So that's my concern, if we're pretty literal in this expansion of what can be a weapon, because frankly, anything can be a weapon. And so I'm not sure if there, what the reasoning was behind that expansion, because I don't want someone kicked out of school because they have a pencil.
And the key thing, the key thing in all of those kind of interpretations is examining intent. Because, and again, with the knowing, that we're knowing, and how it applies in those two, because I know the, it was added to the language with regards to the weapons, and it was added to the language with regards to drugs and alcohol. And, and when you start talking about kids who knowing, who have knowledge of those things, and, and don't, and I think, these are recommendations from the Ola, and the reason the word knowing is added in there is because of the severity of those occurrences, and the importance to overall school safety and building safety for, for all the kids. So a kid who has knowledge of weapons in the school, or drugs or alcohol in school, kids with those things in the school present a danger to other kids. It's our expectation that they, when they know that stuff, they tell us about it. If they impede an investigation in those matters, it would be, so that kind of language helps us. The reality of it, it doesn't, kids don't get suspended for having a pencil. But if you brandish the pencil as a weapon, and you use the pencil with intent to harm somebody, you get in trouble for having a weapon. The same thing with maybe a lock that they swing and put on their finger and hit a, hit a, hit a child. You know, the, the language, I know in some of those instances, it is specific, but they're just examples, because it could be any and all, because there's kind of other language that says any and all. And again, it goes back to how our administrators do their investigations and the thoroughness for that. And then, you know, it's like the, the legal, there has to be intent for a crime to be committed on the, on the legal side. We have a little bit more leeway that way.
I think common sense also comes in, like.
Right. Well, and that's why we don't do like zero tolerance, we don't do like, you know, there's been stories out there of a school, you know, with a zero, you have a zero tolerance policy, so a second grader takes a chicken nugget in the cafeteria and points it at a kid, and they expel the child for a weapon. You know, we don't do those, we don't do those kind of things.
On page eight of 143, what says students should have no expectation of privacy in their use of the network, meaning the Olentangie's network, and by signing the handbook, they agree their personal computing device may be confiscated. Is that, where do we derive the power to confiscate the students' devices? Is that from the state, or is that by board policy?
If they're, if they're using those materials inappropriately, it's in our.
So it's from board policy or from the state? And then, what, two kind of hypotheticals, what if the student doesn't sign the handbook? Can still confiscate his wireless?
The handbook, signing the handbook means that they, we, we have made them aware of that, and if they don't, then we record that they refuse to, they reflexively refuse to sign it. We have to make them aware of the conditions in the handbook.
Right, so if they don't sign it, you can't confiscate it?
No. Just awareness.
It's just an awareness. We could, again, if they violate, just because they don't sign it, doesn't mean that, that excludes them from not violating.
Okay.
So I mean, we don't, if they don't sign it, if they don't sign it, it would be okay for them to bring drugs or alcohol to school and then not punish them. If they don't sign it, it would be okay for them to bring a weapon.
Right, that's why. Those are hypotheticals. What about if they're using LTE versus wireless signal? They're not using the network. I don't know why, why do we have?
Well, again, if, if, if they're using the, the electronic devices inappropriately.
During the school day.
During the school day, then, then it falls under our, our usage, usage policy.
So if they're passing around inappropriate pictures, or doing bullying, that's against the bullying policy.
Right. Well, what if there's one person that says, that kid over there has something on his phone that's bad, you can just go over and take it?
Well, in, in the case of investigating a school, a school discipline offense, like in, in a legal setting, the police need probable cause that a crime has been committed. School officials have a wider range of, quite honestly, of leeway, we need a reasonable suspicion. And we take that, and sometimes, depending on what, what the sources are, you have to believe the credibility of the source. I would say we do investigate those things. And again, you're, when you're operating from a safety concern, our administrators aren't looking to get anybody in trouble, but they, it's their, they have to be thorough and do their due diligence in making any kind of investigation. So all of those things start with, with some kind of information, and then we just proceed to do a thorough and respectful investigation.
Couple more. On the page 42 of 143, where it talks about directory information of students, it says we can disclose without prior written consent, student name, address, telephone number, date of birth, weight, sports. Why don't we try and limit the information that we can give out without consent? You know, you don't need to give out, you know, date of birth and place of birth.
Those are guidelines, I believe those are federal guidelines for like, the directory information. And we can, what, what we do as kids, if they don't want to be included in the directory, that way they exclude themselves. So like a military recruiter can come in and ask for directory information, we don't. But it's things that we publish publicly, so if we, if you put your name in a directory publicly, then you're putting yourself out there to be, for that to be requested.
That's really a follow-up to the board policy that we've adopted in London. It's, we've speak, we've spoken to that whole issue previously.
So it mirrors the board policy that's already passed?
Which already passed, that's correct. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray.
Mr. Morris, items E and F, the intent to retire, rehire.
We've gotten to the second page.
Good evening. Wanted to, tonight, to address a couple items on the board agenda. As part of a hire-revised code, the process for the board to go through and execute a retire, rehire, a teacher in the same position, there are several different pieces of a hire revised code that we need to, to meet. The first one of those, we've already done for these two individuals listed on the agenda tonight, and that's a media notice. It has to take place 60 days prior to board action. Tonight, they're listed as a discussion item, because this is the public input session. So if someone wanted from the public to comment, tonight would be the night. But you see those folks listed? Dr. Lucas has aptly talked about why we do retire, rehire. When I come to you and share these individuals each year, again, I'd like to remind you that this is a very, very small percentage of the teachers that we employ. We employ over 1,100 teachers, and I believe we have six, planning on having six of the 1,100 for next year. So this is not a process that we do lightly. We always make sure that before we would ask you to consider rehiring a retired teacher into the same position, that they have the full endorsement of their building principal. I ask that question to the building principal when they inquire, is this an excellent teacher? To make sure that we're keeping someone that we really do want with kids, that we can capture that experience, that expertise, and we are doing it at a lower cost. So again, just want to remind you that it's not something that we do a lot of, but we certainly want to take advantage of some outstanding teachers at a lower cost if we can. And you can see the two that are listed tonight as discussion items, is Dora Damato at Liberty High School, who's a special education enrichment specialist, and Havelford, which is a Liberty High School science teacher. Just for these two individuals, if we proceed forward, if you, at a later date approve their rehire, we'll save about $75,000 for salary going into next year. And Dr. Lucas already mentioned, with the total six teachers for next year, we will save over $200,000 in savings. So I would answer any questions you might have about these two items.
Questions, comments from the board? Okay, seen none, thank you.
Thank you.
Public participation, session number two. This will be the lengthier of the two sessions. Regarding.
All regarding turf.
Action items? Okay. So again, as you come up to the podium, please name and address for the record. Try to keep it to five minutes. You don't have to use all five minutes if you don't have five minutes of material. We do cap the session to 30 minutes, but if we feel that the comments aren't repetitive, we do have the ability to extend if necessary. So first up is Mike Bull. You're covered in, we're down to 14 already. Sean McGinnis, please come up. And again, name and address to the podium regarding turf.
My name's Sean McGinnis, I'm the head lacrosse coach, 6884 Worthington Road. My reason here tonight is to support turf for Olentangie Orange High School as the lacrosse coach. Seven games we played so far this year, five of the seven teams had turf fields, that's a competitive advantage. When we're inside a gymnasium, auxiliary gym, in, in the end of February, all through March, and they're out on their turf field practicing, it's a competitive advantage. So I feel that turf for the lacrosse program at our high school, at Orange High School, makes us at, or evens out the competitive level among all the other central Ohio high schools that have lacrosse and have turf. Other than that, OYA Lacrosse has over 700 kids participating in the youth program for this district, and it's one of the largest in programs in the Midwest, as well in the country, and that just helps tie in high school programs, middle school programs, youth programs, having a turf facility. There's a lot of events and things we can do, and as well as, you know, we're showing that we're looking down towards the younger generation and providing opportunities for them in the future. So thanks for your time.
Thank you. Vicki Clausen, turf?
Hi, Vicki Clausen, 9326 Tahoma Street, Columbus, Ohio, 43240. I am the president of the Olden Tangi Orange Athletic Boosters. On behalf of our board, our student athletes, their families, our coaches, and the staff at Orange High School, I'm here tonight to ask the Board of Education to approve the facility change form to allow for the installation of the synthetic filled turf at Pioneer Stadium at Orange High School. OAB is proud to be able to provide the substantial gift to the students, the marching band, the athletes of Orange High School, to enhance their academic, music, and athletic experiences. OAB, listen to the board, and we are presenting a gift, which is 100% paid by private donations and financing. This new surface will provide thousands of uses for the school and our community. We want to thank our pop arts and our sports teams and all of the partners that have helped for their enthusiastic support of this project. In closing, I can ask your acceptance of this form so that we may begin construction this summer and be ready for our Pioneer Stadium, take the field come August. Thank you.
Thank you. Gary Lewis?
Gary Lewis, 5944 Doral Court, Westerville, Ohio, 43082. Ladies and gentlemen of the board, Superintendent Lucas, guests, I'd like to thank you for your time tonight. I'm a 16-year resident and trusting supporter of Olden Tangi local schools. Olden Tangi schools have provided an excellent educational experience for my three children from both an academic and extracurricular perspective. Academics have challenged and prepared them for success in their undergraduate and postgraduate experiences. Extracurricular activities to various sports have also added significantly to their experience while teaching valuable life lessons beyond the classroom. The Board of Education, administrators, teachers, and coaches are committed and to be commended for the excellent opportunity that they have been providing for our students. Truly, you provide the opportunity for maximum learning for every student. The community has entrusted previous boards, this board, with our two most important assets, our money and our children. You have been successful. Your financial responsibility makes us one of the most efficient districts in the state on a per pupil student expenditure while providing excellent results academically. Ladies and gentlemen of the board and Superintendent Lucas, the community has placed its trust and support in you many times. It is now time for you to trust your community in turn and accept the gift from the Olden Tangi Orange Athletic Boosters of synthetic turf field. Thank you.
Thank you. Donald Smith?
Donald Smith, 1427 Anico Avenue, Lewis Center. Good evening, board. I'm speaking as both president of Pop Arts, the music boosters for Olden Tangi Orange, and also kind of for Mark Zerilli, who, the music director, who had to leave, he had other plans and this ran longer than he anticipated. But anyway, I've been a resident of this area for 10 years, and my son actually marched in with the marching pioneers the very first year of Orange High School as an eighth grader, when there were 60 kids in the marching band. And he's graduating here in a few weeks. And watch the program grow, watch the collaboration that has existed between Pop Arts and OAB as we've worked together on this. And Pop Arts is fully committed in supporting the Athletic Boosters in their pursuit of turf. It will benefit the entire community. One of the things that I think has been really neat about Orange is that it is a community. It is a community event, support one another. We have children who participate both, whether it be in the performing arts, whether it be in sports, we're united. Turf will benefit everyone within the school, from marching band to field hockey, who, let's be honest, field hockey doesn't get to see the field very often, okay? This would allow them to do so. We've talked, heard talk of additional usage. We've already, Mr. Zerilli and I and Mr. Betts, we've already talked about September 28th, having our first Orange band show. If you've ever seen Orange's band perform, it's a show. And we're going to bring in, you know, 10 or 12 other schools who are going to perform with us, but not as well. So, but I am proud to be a member of this, of the school district. I'm proud to be a parent of students who go to Olden Tangi Orange High School, and I'm proud to support the efforts for turf. So thank you.
Thank you. Brian Cross?
My name is Brian Cross, 459 West Green Lane. I'm the head football coach at Olden Tangi Orange High School. I've been there for five years. Prior coming to Olden Tangi Orange, I was fortunate to be the head coach at Kent McKinley High School, which is the pro football Hall of Fame stadium. And that was my first experience with turf, coaching on turf for five, five years at McKinley. And we talked about longevity. While I was there, you had Malone College, you had Walsh College, you had three Canton High Schools, all playing on the field turf, plus soccer games, everything you could think of. The benefits of turf are, in my opinion, unlimited for the entire community. My time there and the five years there, injury factors, I didn't see any abnormal amount of injuries above and beyond what I saw in all the years that I've coached on, on grass. I don't think there's a reason not to get it from my experiences. And everybody talks about playing surface and games, but really, you play 10 football games a year, you play once a week on your field, you're on your practice field four days a week. That's the field you should be worried about. Not too many people talk about that. This will give everybody in our school an opportunity to practice in a solid surface the entire year. And it's our goal in our district for all our high schools to be successful in the tournaments. Fortunately, if you make the tournaments, you play five extra weeks. That gives you a great opportunity to practice on a solid surface for five extra weeks. So I think those are some of the reasons that this is a great idea for our community. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Zerilli has left, right? But Abraham? Mr. Abraham still here?
He left.
He left? Bob Roman?
Bob Roman, 1830 White Score, Lewis Center, Ohio. Mr. O'Brien, the beginning of the meeting, you had something on your agenda around key dates. Now, I was sitting in the back there, I couldn't hear very well, but I think I heard most of the key dates, and there's one that you, I think you might have missed. That's November 5th. Okay, that's a key date. Will be a key date then, Olden Tangi. Also, now on the agenda, is it correct that Linda Martin is retiring and not going to be affiliated with Olden Tangi anymore?
We'll address that when you have any comments.
Okay, well, if she's retiring, I'm sad to see Linda go. I have had the opportunity to work with Linda a couple times during her tenure here on the Heritage All Day Kindergarten and redistricting. And I've had nothing but pleasant experiences with Linda. You guys, though, were going to miss her very much because now you have to find somebody else to author your dispatch editorials. And speaking of that, you know, this whole last two years, you spent time and effort relinquishing your power. You don't want to talk to the people, you don't want to talk to your employees, the thousands of employees you have in the school district. The state, local, federal governments in this country are for the people, by the people, by the people, for the people, whatever. You don't want to talk to the people, except the boosters. I mean, you're well-connected with the boosters, that's obvious. All right? When are you going to talk to the people? My recommendation is the next, if there is a next, community dialogue this school year, let's talk about the five-year plan. Community dialogue with the new five-year plan maybe. So also, in the essence of grading periods, grade next, next week is third week of, or third semester grading period. And I've taken upon myself to issue grades to all the board members. Ms. Feasel, Mr. O'Brien, Ms. Dunbar, D+. Mr. King, solid C, because you agree that the treasure search was a waste of money. Adam, B-, you could find more common ground, I think. So with that, the turf implementation. My main issue with the turf implementation, I don't want past, present, future tax dollars going to the turf, any of the turf fields. I think the boosters have proven that that probably will not happen. I don't want any of these bond monies that we're issuing now going, and I will be asking Todd, requesting how we're going to spend that $7 million. $2 million approximately is held, is contained within tonight's agenda, I believe, between the buses and some other, some other things. And that all appropriate revenues from miscellaneous events hosted in the future all go to the district as well. So I'll be watching that. Retire, rehire, if we really wanted to quote taxpayer savings on here, because we're looking at it from the micro lever, level, what's Olden Tangi saving? But in terms of the state of Ohio, there's no savings, right? We all know it. But there could be real savings if we made these people 1099 vendors and have them pay their own social security and state and local taxes. Then we wouldn't have any retire, rehires because they wouldn't want to do it. It wouldn't be in their best interest to do it financially. So that's a recommendation for the future. Last thing, I'm only one person, and my endorsement doesn't matter, but Todd, I hope you get the job. Thank you.
There's a lot in there, so let me try to take it one at a time. Linda Martin is retiring, but she will not be leaving the district. She's a retire, rehire affected through the ESC. So she will remain in her current responsibility, but it'll be positioned funded by the ESC. May 9th is a community dialogue, which would be 30 minutes prior to this board meeting. So 6:00, 6:30, community dialogue, 6:30, business session. $7.3 million, you're right, two of which is deployed tonight to capital improvements. The balance covers the capital plan through 2015, which Todd mentioned in his remarks. And we've, let's fully disclose the intent and use of those proceeds.
But there's no schedule. It states how the $5 million is going to be spent in the package tonight.
No, but it's in the development committee's five-year capital plan. That was passed last year. This is just a funding mechanism to achieve the goals of the capital plan. Okay? Brian Helwig?
I think this is running a little later than normal, isn't it? Maybe? A little bit. My name is Brian Helwig, I'm at 9782 Oxford Circle in Powell. So I guess you guys probably know that I'm not a big fan of the turf project primarily because of the donation. I actually would probably be more in favor of it if the community would actually take a vote. Because it's not just individuals raising money, but I have some documents that I'm going to pass around, a little story that I'm going to share with you. Besides the 350-plus signatures I have here that say no, and the over 200 comments that say don't do it. I think it's kind of interesting that the board actually has a policy for donations that exceed cash value of $5,000. The policy, on page 37 to 47, that was previously approved on 10/23/12, states, donations shall be subject to applicable federal, state, and local laws, such as competitive bidding requirements, et cetera. However, you go off and you look at the bid, and you only see one. You see Mami turf. Now, what's interesting about Mami turf, you actually pull it up, is their contacts are fantastic. It's a family guy, right? Their domain names aren't the same, they have personal addresses. But what struck me more than anything about Mami was their affiliation to the actual manufacturer, who I had the great ability to pick up upon and talk to. When I talked to him, what's interesting about UBU Sports is the only people that can install this turf here is Mami. Which means you need another manufacturer to come in to get the competitive bid according to your policy. Now, that's just a technicality, right? There's one other small little part that's kind of interesting about Mami. I usually like to look at who I do business with. And I know one of you decided to go ahead and really looked me up on LinkedIn. I really appreciate the time. I think it was Mr. King, I think, is it you? I wasn't sure.
O'Brien.
O'Brien, sorry.
No, I'm O'Brien.
You're O'Brien. Sorry. So what's interesting is you didn't do the due diligence on Mami. Because you see, the first president, P.J. Koffhauer, Koffhammer, he's actually in the middle of an ethics violation with the Ohio Ethics Board because he supplied the turf to the other founder who was just arrested in a sex scene for taking $100 and offering it to a police officer for sex. These are who our boosters are doing business with. So I challenge you, if you have a daughter, a son, do you want to do business with a company? Do you want these individuals coming here, doing business in our community? Do we want to accept this donation and support that? Because that's what he's doing. There's arrest records there. So is his. Now, I took the privilege of calling the Ohio Ethics Committee. And they're very interested in did any infraction occurs or about to occur. And what's interesting is, is they can't determine one way or the other. Because when I emailed you, Todd, and said, hey, where's the second competitive bid? One minute. Yep, you said they don't need one. Unfortunately, I said my mistake. I put a copy on page 37 to 47 in the bottom of my request that says they do. There must be two. So if you vote, then I will turn it over to the Ohio Ethics Committee, and it will be up for them to determine whether or not there were two competitive bids. And with the sports manufacturer having the only partner in Ohio be one and the same, that's a pretty significant conflict of interest. Thank you for your time.
Kirby Nielsen?
Kirby Nielsen, 7408 Falls View Circle, Delaware, Ohio. I think there are many reasons not to install artificial turf. Tonight, I'd like to focus on three. Number one, in my estimation or my thinking, is no deliberation. Despite all the controversy, the public outcry last summer against the installation of artificial turf, there's been no public deliberation or debate regarding this matter. There has been no public discussion by the board. The process from the inception of the idea to your vote tonight is completely devoid of transparency. The board's approach to this is simply wrong. It is clear to me that a secret decision was made by some board members to support this project regardless of what anyone else thought. I agree with the comment before, if there had been a public forum, a public debate, there'd been some kind of interchange where different points of view could have been expressed, perhaps I would not have this objection. My second objection is the same one I made here last summer. That is a tax burden. Artificial turf will certainly come to the taxpayers as an additional burden regardless of the promises made earlier by some of the booster groups. Once the turf is installed, there'll be no more incentive to support fundraising, to pay off notes or replace them when the time comes. In fact, I think the proposal that's submitted tonight specifies clearly that the cost is going to be, for replacement, will be on the school board. So I'm on fixed income, this is a part of my school expense, your school expense, and So, I'm on fixed income, this is a part of my school expense, your school expense, and it's part of my tax burden. So, my third objection was organizational advice, and I'm, again, I was kind of in the back, I couldn't hear everything that transpired. I think it was quite good information from Mr. Fuller and Mr. Gordon, I don't know if they're here, again, I couldn't catch it all. But if you looked at the report that was made by the Development Committee on 3/6 of this year, 13, there were some real heavy concerns expressed by that committee, particularly by the facilities acquisition and maintenance group. Now, I understand that maybe some of those concerns have been addressed, that's the part I couldn't really hear, what's been updated between the boosters and the Economic Development Committee. But as of 3/6, no, there were a lot of problems that were coming to light, overwhelming number was the word that they used. I will not go through and list them all, they're in that report. One that we talked a little bit about tonight is liability or safety issues. I think there was some need for more information on that, apparently it's been provided or been discussed. And I kind of thought, I did hear that one of the issues about whether things are safe or not is the kind of shoe you use. So it occurred to me while I'm sitting back there, that instead of spending $500,000 for new artificial turf, why don't we just wait for better shoes to be developed? You know, solve our problem. It's a better shoe. So, in any case, I think the other thing was that all financial considerations should have been vetted and investigated before the turf's installed. I did not hear whether or not those had been addressed. But as I read the report on 3/6/13, it's a clear message, do not approve this installation. Yeah, one minute. In conclusion, I don't feel we need artificial turf because Dublin or Westerville has it. We don't need artificial turf for competitive reasons, we have winning teams. We don't need artificial turf to provide better education, and we don't need artificial turf for any other reason at all. Thank you.
Barbara Ramsey? Do the loser? Carl Solomon?
Carl Solomon, 2135 Sherburne Lane, Pow. I wanted to speak tonight on two issues. The first is the turf issue, and I have a number of concerns about this turf project. I attended, a couple of weeks ago, a presentation on the Liberty Project, the Liberty Turf Project, and I was frankly appalled at the lack of thorough investigation of many areas. Now, tonight, there was a discussion about safety, and I thought it was interesting that early on, and the first gentleman that spoke talked about the safety benefits of artificial turf, but that the last speaker somewhat contradicted that. And as a matter of fact, what we heard at the Liberty presentation was that the statistics are mixed, that some people say that injury statistics are worse with artificial turf, others don't, but there is most certainly information out there which indicates that there are higher severity rates of injuries on artificial turf versus natural turf. And I feel that the contradiction that we heard tonight is the same contradiction we heard about the safety argument at the Liberty meeting that I attended. I also have a concern about funding. One of the things that we heard was that the fields could be rented to organizations that might want to use them, and that that income would come back to the boosters in order to pay off the loans. Now, Julie's shaking her head, but that's what we were told at the Liberty meeting. And if that happens to be the case, I can assure you, there will be a legal challenge to that, without question. Our concern, and my concern, and a number of folks that spoke here tonight, is if you can show me that there will be no cost to the taxpayers now and forevermore, then I'm fine with the project. But you can't tell me that. And we heard tonight, speakers in favor of the artificial turf that acknowledge that in eight to 10 years, there's gonna be a cost to replace them of $250,000 to $300,000. Now, I submit that's in today's dollars, that's not in the dollars 10 years from now, or eight years from now. But the other thing that they failed to mention is that after eight years, the artificial turf is no longer guaranteed, so that any maintenance costs have to be borne by the district. So the district will be picking up the maintenance costs after the eighth year, the district will be picking up the replacement costs. That's just not acceptable, and it's completely unnecessary. I'd like to understand how it improves academics in all Olentangie School District by purchasing artificial turf. I'd like to understand how it improves that 20% remediation rate that our superintendent talked about, which frankly is disgraceful. My concern is that the issue of artificial turf has not been properly and fully vetted. Discussions that took place in committee are not complete and are not thorough. There was a gentleman that spoke last year about this subject that brought up the safety issues. I don't think the safety issues have been thoroughly vetted. I don't think we've had proper discussion about the issue of runoff, for example, from the fields. I don't think there's been adequate exploration of the issue of injuries, serious injuries. So, my concern is, this is a project that I think is unnecessary, is not needed. I still think there are legal issues associated with this. I do think, as I said last year, that the relationship that this establishes between the boosters and the school district establishes a legal nexus which will lead to additional legal problems for the school district. For example, in the area of, what if these loans are not repaid? What if they default on the loans? Does it come back on the school district? I don't think that question's clear. And that's something that, as a taxpayer and a resident, I want to be clear. The other issue I wanted to talk about, and I'm gonna talk more about this at a future meeting, but I did comment at the last meeting about the selection of legal counsel, or the interviews of legal counsel. And I did take up, I did take the opportunity to go into Todd's office and review the proposals, and I was frankly disappointed that several of the firms, I'm gonna say at least two and maybe three of the firms, should never have been allowed to submit proposals. If these firms were really being screened, as you argued, as you claimed, how did these firms ever get into the selection process? Todd mentioned...
Carl, you're over time. We're late. We're gonna move to the next speaker, thank you.
I'll have more to say about this.
I appreciate it.
In the future, thank you.
Any clarifying comments? Not anymore? No? Okay. Steve Swisher?
I'm Steve Swisher, I'm at 5651 Lindbrook in Westerville. I'm in here in support of the turf project. I have a slightly unique perspective, like I think all of us, I'm a taxpayer in the district, and like most of us, I have some children at Orange, they're actually lifers, they're freshmen and seniors, and they participate in varsity soccer, and as part of that passion for the game, I became like a smaller group of us involved in the boosters. For the past three years, I've been the booster club president for girls' soccer. And through those efforts through the booster club, I got to be on the turf committee, and through those efforts, the turf committee, which is a smaller group of us that are here, actually became part of a really small group of initial investors. And of the guys that are in this initial investment group, we've all donated at least $25,000. I happen to be a little bit more than that, so I've got some vested interest in this project, and I've taken it very seriously. So with that, I had a lot prepared, but I'll kind of knock it down to five things. We saw earlier today, we have a premier district. We've been fortunate at Orange to build premier sports teams, but what we don't have is a premier facility for them to play their games on. We've heard a couple of names mentioned, but they were not nearly as exhaustive, so I'm gonna read you a quick list that I've accumulated for the benefit of those of you that don't travel around. These are teams in central Ohio that have turf fields. New Albany, Dublin, Westerville, Hilliard, Bexley, Pickerington, Worthington, Upper Arlington, Grandview Heights, Reynoldsburg, Gehanna, Johnstown Monroe, Canal Winchester, Bloom Carols, De Sales, and then some private schools, Wellington, St. Charles, Biscuit Hartley, and Hamilton Township. That is an exhaustive list. Those are teams that can play on surfaces day in and day out, premier programs, which I think is what our kids deserve. Secondly, we heard some stuff about maximizing field utilization. Today, when you drive by these fields like you did if you came in the back, they're empty. We don't practice in the stadium. It's 40 nights a year max, that's a tremendous waste of taxpayers' money for that massive asset of a stadium. We need to do better. With turf, we can get that to at least 200 nights a year, right? A lot of different kids playing on there, within our school and outside of our school. We talked a little bit about, thirdly, consistent playing surface, it's always level all the time. These studies that were shown, when you read Dr. Dragoo, who was the Stanford guy, what he says is, in order, "The best field is a pristine turf field, like the Columbus Crew has." He says, "No high schools have that." Second is a quality turf field. Way down the list is a pockmarked and dirt field, those are his exact words. If you've been on our practice fields, or you've been in our playing fields after a couple of games, that's what we've got. So we are operating at the lowest common denominator for our kids, and that is simply not fair. We talked about safety, fourth, and a reduction of injuries. Julie kind of hit it on the head, it's not the game nights, it's those practice exposures. Our intent is to move as many practices as we possibly can to this field, they're not used for practice at all. Nobody practices on the stadium. For every practice, we move up, it reduces the occurrences of those concussions, the knee injuries, the ankle injuries, and these studies that are done were very limited. They were on elite athletes, you can Google it, you can see the disclaimers, they're not conclusive, the authors say they don't apply to high school kids, they apply to elite NFL players and college players, in the case of the Stanford study. So you can't, you can't take those. Number five, we haven't talked about, we're all kind of green people today, right? These fields have positive environmental impact. If you think about simple things, like the mower emissions that are gonna go away, the pesticides, the fertilizer, the wasted water, they're all made of recycled materials, and then when we do replace it, the actual field itself is recyclable. So if you can kind of tell from these five key points summarized from six or eight months of studying this, I'm pretty passionate about this, that's why I've decided to put my own money in to the program as an investment, along with some of my best friends, and I guarantee you, it's gonna be a phenomenal asset for the board. So I would like to thank you for your support, and I hope you assign our facility change form. Thank you very much.
I have a clarifying comment. Something for, that Mr. Swisher made me think of, Orange unfortunately is the school, the high school that has the fewest practice fields. So they are very limited, so I just wanted to point that out. It's because of the footprint of the area.
Correct.
Our last comment, Roger Bartz, please.
Roger Bartz, 7922 Manor Gate Street, Lewis Center. I'll just address, in closing out tonight, some of the inaccuracies that were just brought up a little while ago. First of all, OOAB vetted this process through the Board of Education, under the direction of the Board of Education. We've spent two to three years of due diligence, thousands of hours of time on this. It's a 100% private donation, we did have two bidders. We chose the lower-priced bidder that also happened to have the higher-quality product, so that's a fallacy and wrong. It's a private project, the burden on the notes and the finances is on the Olentangie Orange Athletic Boosters, not a bit on the board. If we fail to pay, we go under. Our private investors lose their money, and they understand that. We are a cash generating machine, we generate between $500,000 and $600,000 worth of gross revenue every year. We have a financial plan to pay this off, and to pay it off early. So I would say to those people, if you're concerned about whether or not we're gonna be solvent, come to a meeting, open up your checkbook, volunteer, and help us out. Safety's been addressed, we're not gonna talk about that anymore. Our financials have been vetted by Carlisle Patchen and Murphy, an attorney, law firm, that looked at all of our financials, all the things we're gonna do, approved, showed them to be solvent, and we're moving forward. I appreciate you mentioning the limitations on the field space at Orange, because that is a big issue. Also too, no fees, we're gonna go to the Olentangie Orange Athletic Boosters for any field rentals whatsoever. We're paying our bill from what we do and raise money, we're not gonna take a penny of board money, penny of taxpayer money. All I can say is, go pioneers.
Todd, do you want to introduce treasurer's action items?
I recommend approval of action items A through E.
So moved. Second. Thank you, please. Discussion? Call the roll, please.
Ms. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Dr. Lucas, superintendent of action items?
Can you pull out, before I announce?
Yeah, can you pull out? A, B1, E...
All of A?
Yeah.
Okay.
A, B1, E, F, G, Q, and U.
E, F, G, Q, and U?
Correct.
Okay, so all of A, B1, E, F, G, Q, and U. Is that correct?
Right.
Alright. I present superintendent action items B2 through E, C, D, H through P, R, S, T, V, and W.
And that includes your amendments that we approved earlier?
And that would include the amendment, or the addendum from B2.
Because the rest are under A.
The rest are under A.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'm sorry, a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Okay, second, please.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Feasel?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
Yes.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
Now I present superintendent action item A, including the addendums and items A.
So moved. Do you want to do them, or are you gonna do them all together, or are you gonna do them separately?
This whole thing that was pulled out, can we cluster all the pullouts together?
That's fine with me.
Yeah, it's fine.
B1, E, F, G, Q, U.
If you can repeat that again. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Discussion? Call the roll.
Ms. Feasel?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Ms. Dunbar?
Yes.
Mr. White?
No.
Mr. O'Brien?
Yes.
We will now move into a retrospective session for the purpose of, let me try to read this right, considering the employment compensation of public employees, considering the purchase of property for public purposes, considering security arrangements and emergency response protocols, no action will be taken when we return. Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.
Do you have a motion?